Okay, we'll go ahead and get started again. Next up is the candidates running for city council in Columbia Heights. And since this is a separate segment, let me just quickly go through the opening comments that welcomed from the League of Women Voters and the North Metro Cable TV, which is videotaping this and will run it online afterwards. You're welcome to submit questions, as you have been, and we have volunteers from the League of Women Voters who is sorting through those this evening. Remember to stay as quiet as possible, put your cellphones and pagers on silent, and hold your applause till the end. And I've just been told that we'll go about 45 minutes on this segment so we can have a 10-minute break before we go into the final segment with the mayor. And also, we've just been informed, one of the candidates who was supposed to be here tonight, John Merzen, was called to the hospital for a family medical emergency concerning his son. So let's keep him in our prayers. So we will go on this evening with the three candidates. And, as you know, we rotate the questions, and they've been given the three advanced questions. They've agreed to the format for this evening. And so with that, we'll start with their first prepared answer. Describe your background and community involvement, and we'll start right down the row here. First up will be Nell Bing.
Good evening. My name is Nell Bing, and I want to thank the League of Women Voters for having us here this evening, and I want to thank all of you for coming here despite the weather. My background, I am a Minnesota child. I was born in St. Paul. I grew up in St. Paul. I moved to Minneapolis where I got engaged to my now-husband Garrett. And after we had our daughter Juliette, we decided it was time to purchase our first home, and we headed over the river to Columbia Heights. We've been here for about, just over four years now, and we are so excited to have stake in Columbia Heights. My community involvement has been extensive since I've moved to Columbia Heights. I first started organizing my neighborhood, becoming their block captain after finding out that they did not have a neighborhood watch organized. I also helped form Heights Next as a 501(c)(3) nonprofit group, and I currently serve as a board director. I'm on the multicultural advisory committee. I have recently been elected to the Columbia Heights Library Public Arts Committee, and I'm the founder of the Columbia Heights Peaceful Community Group on Facebook. Thank you.
Next up, Katie Jacobs.
I want to thank the League of Women Voters for giving us this opportunity this evening, and again, for everybody coming out in the inclement weather. I'm sure you had better things to do tonight. My name is Katie Jacobs, and my husband Jake and I are 24-year residents of Columbia Heights. I retired two years ago. I am a wife, mother, grandmother, great-grandmother of three plus three plus one and three-quarters. Can't wait for her to get here. I've spent 30 years in the printing industry in various managerial positions. I'm retired from the airline where I spent 12 years as a volunteer for the Flight Attendant Union in the capacity of a master executive chair for the Employee Assistance Program. I continue to support the flight attendants through an organization called FADAP, Flight Attendant Drug and Alcohol Program, which is congressionally funded for flight attendants across the world. And I am now working as a counselor, substance abuse counselor, and have my own business here in Columbia Heights. My community involvement includes being on the charter commission and co-founder and leader of COPEC, which is a grassroots organization to support children in our school district.
Okay. And next is Nick Nowinski.
Yep. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having this. My background, I've been in Heights my whole life. My wife has also been a Heights resident for her whole life. We are raising two daughters here, nine and 11 now, both in the school district, one's at North Park, one's at Columbia Academy. I spent 15 years as a routman, rout serviceman, teamster for G&amp;K Services. And I left that probably four, five years ago, and now I'm actually a part-owner of J&amp;M Auto Recycling that's in the city here. Some of my community experience is currently I'm the president of the Lions Club. I lead up the jamboree committee. I am an athletic booster, and I have coached for four years as the Little League. T-ball.
Okay. And the next question, as we rotate the candidates, what are your qualifications for serving? First up is Katie Jacobs.
Again, referencing my past managerial and flight attendant, my volunteer in the Flight Attendant Union has allowed me to live with or to work with a very diverse group of people, having to deal with crisis intervention and family-based traumas. It's given me the opportunity to work with those who often feel less powerful than they should. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Nick Nowinski.
And it's the qualifications?
Yes.
Yep. Just my experience with the multiple community groups that I have joined and ended up leading the one with the Lions. We've made some big changes with that in the jamboree that have gone positively. My work as a tow truck operator all day puts you in some pretty unique situations that you have to think on your feet, be quick, be adaptable, and get through them. So I'm a hard worker, and when I start something, I always follow through, so.
Thank you. And next up, Nell Bing.
So my qualifications started when I pursued my two-year degree at St. Paul College, where I got my generals out of the way with an associate of arts. I then went to Metropolitan State University where I got my four-year degree, a Bachelor's of Science in Business Administration with an emphasis in accounting. And I took that degree and spent 10 years working for a retail purchasing co-op in St. Paul, starting in their accounting field and then moving to becoming their head event planner, where I managed multimillion-dollar trade shows for 10 years, worked with combining, you know, a network, a team to kick these shows off, lots of budgeting reconciliation, and just a ton of, you know, contract review and negotiations. Aside from that professional experience, I think Heights Next, being a board director, helping to get that nonprofit started, has also given me tons of qualifications to hopefully serve on city council. Thank you.
Okay. And the next prepared question, your short-term and long-term goals, what are they, starting with Nick Nowinski?
My short-term goal, two years ago when I ran, it was civic participation, and I want to continue that. I feel that the last two years, the community has really started coming out. There's been a lot of groups forming, a lot of groups working together. In the primaries, we had the biggest turnout in decades, so I believe that's going well. Long-term, I want to bring businesses back to help with the tax burden for the residents.
Okay. Next up, Nell Bing.
So to start with my short-term goals, I am a big advocate to see some safer pedestrian spaces. Our 2040 comp plan has identified the top 10 most dangerous intersections in Columbia Heights, and I'd like to immediately take a look at those top 10 intersections and discover what we can do to make those safer right off the bat, whether it's from some curb extensions or having some crosswalk lengthens, anything to make those stand out a little bit more so that we know that they're dangerous intersections and that we can make them safer. Another short-term goal is to start utilizing our parks. Columbia Heights has 15 parks and 3 1/2 square miles, and I feel like they are underutilized. We are often at Housit Park and Keys and McKenna, but I'd love to see more events over at Lomiyanki, over at Govette Park and Sullivan Lake. Long-term goals, I want to help diversify our economic tax base by bringing in businesses to Columbia Heights, to not only solidify that Columbia Heights feeling, but to help with the tax burden, and also to implement a junior city council to get youth involved in our local political process.
Okay. Same question, Katie Jacobs.
Short-term goals, I'd like to tell you that that would be to be elected to the council. But on a more serious note, I'd like to see some improvements along the Lower Central Avenue corridor, the new grants that were awarded for facade improvements, I think is a step in the right direction. I'd like to see more, more things like that. I'd like to see that program expanded so that we can facelift that whole section and make it more welcoming to the community. And I agree with both Nell and Nick that for long-term goals, we need to get businesses in here to help take some of the burden, the tax burden off of the residents and to grow those businesses. And I would love to see a mentorship program similar to what Anoka County has, but utilizing our local successful business people for helping out those new business people that want to start something and be successful.
Okay. And now we'll move to the audience questions. First up was going to be Nell Bing, and the question is, "Do you support the Columbia Heights School District referendum? Why or why not?"
I am excited to say without a doubt in my mind that yes, I do support this bond referendum. Our schools need this. This is not a want for the community. This is something that our schools need. Our students have headed back into another year where North Park has an entrance that, you know, it's not a secure entrance. We are not ADA compliant at North Park in certain situations. Our students at the Columbia Heights High School have a band room without adequate practice space, and as a fellow baritone player, I know how important it is to be able to hear when you're playing your music. We have a theater that is just not up to par, and for median amount of about $5 a month, this is something that our community deserves, and I am honored and excited to support it. Thank you.
Same question, Katie Jacobs.
I need to be very clear that I am not against school referendums. However, I'm against this referendum. It was voted down by the community at large last year, and whether that was by 90-plus votes or 900-plus votes, the community spoke their voice, and I think that needs to be strongly considered. And we're very deficient in academic scores. We're far below what the state averages are, and not $1 of this referendum will go to that cause. We've had excellent awards and accolades for our arts and athletics. It's time for the district to sit down and produce a product that they're required to produce, and it needs to be done with the community. They need to sit down and talk to the community about how they could have made what failed last year more palatable and more workable for the community. Thank you.
And same question, Nick Nowinski.
No, the referendum as it stands this year, I do not support. I think there are other options that we could utilize, probably cheaper options. We don't have to ask for it all. Even though it's broken up into three questions, the community did speak last time, and it was voted down. I am for the schools. I have children in North Park and Columbia Academy. My oldest is in band, so I understand the need, but I also understand, after talking to many residents, that we just can't simply keep having all these little increases, increases. Even after last year's, the school board raised the operating 9%. So our residents can't take anymore.
Okay. The next question comes from the audience. It's actually two questions we're going to combine because they're fairly related. And the first up will be Katie Jacobs. So what will you do to grow the city's tax base, and specifically, what would you do to get more businesses in Columbia Heights? Katie?
It's a tough one. We, geographically, we're a very contained community. We don't have a lot of space where we can bring in large businesses that can help us shift that burden from the residents, but I think we have to be very proactive. I think we have to be very creative, and we need to be willing to work as a community and get the job done. In terms of a specific way to do that, I can't tell you that tonight. There is a lot involved in making those types of decisions, but I can guarantee you that I will look at all aspects of that and will do the best that I can to move that forward and help the community with the forward progress.
Okay. Next up, Nick Nowinski.
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. So relates basically to economic development. What will you do to grow the city's tax base and get other businesses to locate in Columbia Heights?
I would like to continue the great programs that have been started recently with the facade program, expanded to 40th and to University. Also promote how much of our volunteer clubs and our, all the clubs in the city are interacting and how much the city does together, because I think businesses will look at that and see that if the community is strong, the business can be strong there.
Okay. And next, Nell Bing.
So I think that growing the tax base and getting businesses in Heights go hand-in-hand. If we can get more businesses in Heights, we help to grow our tax base. And just like Katie said, Columbia Heights is contained. We don't have a lot of opportunity for new development, so then we must focus on redevelopment. We need to look in those businesses that are stagnant, like the empty business over by Sarnas, and see how we can utilize those and get those improved. I love that Columbia Heights has recently taken on the facade improvement program, that we're meeting with businesses halfway, saying, you know what, if you can meet with us, we'd like to help you out and help improve. And I think the other thing that really will help get more businesses in Heights is to brand Heights and make Columbia Heights a destination place where we have a known downtown, something that makes businesses want to be a part of that growth. Thank you.
Okay. And the next question comes from the audience. It's two related items, and Nick Nowinski is going to be the first one to answer this. So we're sitting in the city council chambers here, where you hope to sit as a city council member. A couple items you might be voting on related to city referendum. First one would be, do you support a two-year term for the mayor or a four-year term, and then why? And then second to that is, for the police department, should they report to the mayor or the city manager, and why? Nick Nowinski.
I support a two-year term for the mayor, and I believe that by having that add two years and the staggering four-term council, every election, our residents have a chance to change the majority of the council up here. If the residents don't like what the council's doing, there's an opportunity to change it. If it was switched to four years, you would have a cycle where that was not possible. I also would like the power to stay with the mayor for the police. It's accountability to the residents. I understand that the council can change the city manager, but it's a little different than having an elected person up here concerned with what the citizens want, and I think it's worked out well so far, so.
And next is Nell Bing.
So in regards to supporting a two-year term for mayor or a four-year term, I am an advocate for a four-year term for mayor. As someone who has just recently gotten involved in the campaign process, to have our mayor become elected, serve a year, and then turn around and really start their new campaign one year after they've just gotten elected, it seems a little bit frivolous to me that the mayor is spending their time doing that instead of getting integrated into knowing the city employees and the way the city operates. I would say that if we trust the residents to make the vote to elect a mayor, we should also trust our mayor to serve on a four-year term. Likewise, I also believe that the police support should be under the city manager. And that, for me, is personally based on, I believe that a city manager is someone who could be qualified to do that. And likewise, we should have the trust in our mayor that if our city manager isn't doing an appropriate job, that they and the council would take appropriate action. Thank you.
Same question, Katie Jacobs.
I'm against the four-year term for the mayor. We have a candidate system, and the candidate system allows you to, if there is a mayor that has committed some egregious act and needs to be removed from office, you have a two-year opportunity to do that. And I don't think it's appropriate to change the city's constitution or the charter because of individual dislike for any particular candidate, or that's your opportunity to correct that at the poll. And there's been no history of abuse of behaviors or inappropriateness by the mayor. As far as the oversight remaining with the mayor or going to the city manager, city manager is difficult to terminate, and it would most likely result in action with arbitration through its union that would be far more costly to the citizens, and it would take far more than two years to resolve that issue.
Okay. And the next question from the audience, we'll start with Nell Bing. And that question is, "Heights has a strong history of school-community partnerships, like the Hillard Center, art installations, and after-school programming. What ways do you envision the city working with and supporting our schools?" Nell Bing.
Thank you. So I envision our schools and our city working together through some of the same means that we already see with the after-school programs, with something that I've seen is the summer programs at our parks where children are able to come and get lunches. I would like to see our city support our schools, and in that goes back to that referendum where if we can say that we support our schools, we will vote yes on this referendum this year and give North Park what it needs and Columbia Heights High School what it needs as well. Thank you.
Same question, Katie Jacobs.
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. So Heights has a strong history of school-community partnerships, like the Hillard Center, art installations, and after-school programming. What ways do you envision the city working with and supporting our schools? Katie Jacobs.
I think the programs that are currently in place serve the community very well. I think it's fantastic that we have those things and that there is a correlation and a partnership between the city and the school district. However, I think that beyond the invitation of events, I think that there needs to be a stronger relationship between the school district, the school board, and the administration with the city. And I think that needs to be done with a very transparent approach. Those are the two biggest pieces of our community, and even though they're very separate, they're very integral parts of our community. And both pieces do serve the same taxpayer.
Okay. And next is Nick Nowinski.
Yeah, the schools, I do appreciate what they offer for the after-school and the summer programs. I'm actually the city liaison to the school district. I've been to many board meetings there. I have been to the outreach. I've been to the discussions, but I have not seen a representative come to the city council meeting. So I would like to see more interaction on that level, possibly, to see what the city and school district can do together that way. And hopefully, one of their board members could sit down at the meetings and observe like I have at the school board meetings.
Okay. Moving on to the next question, this relates to road projects that are coming up, and Katie Jacobs will be the first one to answer this one. It says, "We have three major road projects coming up in the next couple of years. We basically have two choices for paying for our portion. The first one is borrowing against future road construction money, which leaves us in the red for the next six to eight years," according to this person, "or take out a bond to cover the city's portion of the cost." And then they also added, "Which would you choose, or do you have other ideas for covering road projects?" First up is Katie Jacobs.
It's going to be a struggle. We know that our taxes are rising. It is a burden to a lot of people in our community. We already are operating under four bonds for millions and millions of dollars. I would like to see us utilize available funds without taxing the residents even more. I think that it requires a lot of maneuvering to make sure that we go forward with that in a way that is going to best serve the community as a whole and still be able to get the job done, because we definitely need the improvement to some of these. These road projects are absolutely critical. Thank you.
And same question, Nick Nowinski.
Can you repeat that again?
Sure. Basically, road transportation projects and how do you pay for them? So there's three of them that are coming up within the next couple of years. Two choices, either one, borrow against future road construction monies, which leaves us in the red for the next six to eight years, or number two, take out a bond to cover the city's portion. Which would you like to do, or do you have other ideas?
Boy, well, I definitely wouldn't take the bond out because we have too much of that already. I would like more, I would need more information on it, really. I mean, to know how much it's going to be per year in the red and what other projects are scheduled five years out, 10 years out. So I wouldn't go the bond route. I guess I would look at the other option of using the money from the future and then look at grants that might be available.
Okay. And same question, Nell Bing.
So just like Nick said, I would definitely start first with grants. There are so many grants available to the public if we can take the time to apply for them, and it is a cumbersome process, but that's where the faith comes in, that the city staff knows how to do that. And so before taking out a bond, putting that tax burden on the residents again, and before borrowing, where we'd be in debt potentially six to eight years, I'd like to look at grants. And then from there, I would say that it's about looking at the financial situation and sitting down with the finance department in the city and seeing what it looks like in five and 10 years, and whether or not it's feasible to borrow the money, or if it really does need to go back to the residents. Thank you.
Thanks. And the next question from the audience relates to gender diversity, and Nick Nowinski will be the first one to answer this. What will you do to support the LGBTQ community in Columbia Heights? Nick Nowinski.
I will treat them just like I do everybody else. I'll give respect, and, I mean, that's really, if you treat everybody with respect and get to know a person, then it doesn't really matter if it's the LGBT community. That's just my opinion. I believe that the more we focus on that, we have to get away from that and just look at the individuals. Everybody likes a smile. Everybody has things in common, such as food and children. If we can just focus on that, start there, we'll get to know our neighbors and focus on that.
Okay. Same question, Nell Bing.
So I believe that our LGBTQ community in Columbia Heights is vastly underrepresented, and I think instead of saying something like, "Everyone likes a smile," they need to be acknowledged and recognized and shown that they are a part of the community. And a part of the way that we can show them that they're part of the community is, I'd love to see some sort of LGBTQ group in Columbia Heights that is focused on Columbia Heights and what they want to bring to the city and what they want to show about the LGBTQ group. Likewise, I'd also love to see some sort of representation in our city newsletter or the newspapers where we could, just for the community at large, to understand what that community brings to Columbia Heights. Thank you.
Same question, Katie Jacobs.
This is not problematic for me. I have worked with the LGBTQ community for the past 14 years, extensively in the flight attendant community. It's not a secret. I've worked with them hand-in-hand. I've worked with them in the substance abuse relative issues, and I have members of the community and my own family. I have a great niece that has just transgendered, and I have a son that is also part of that community. They have, they need to be recognized as individuals just the same as we all do, but they generally don't want it to be treated in a special way. They just want to be recognized for who they are and be accepted, and it's that simple. It doesn't take a lot for us to put them in our arms and move forward with them. Thank you.
And next question from the audience relates to immigration, and the first one to answer will be Nell Bing. How will you continue to make immigrants feel welcome in our community? Nell Bing.
I think this is probably one of the most important questions of this evening, given the state of what's going on in our nation right now. Something that I am proud to say is that my campaign literature is available in three languages. You can find it in Spanish, Somali, and English. And I think that's something that our city needs to focus on as well. I know it's in the comp plan, and it's up and coming, but it needs to happen sooner because we have a large immigrant base in Columbia Heights, and if they head to our website... And if they head to our website, can they read it? Do they understand what our community education offers? Do they understand what a city council meeting is saying? Do they know what's happening when zoning laws change? It is just as easy as starting to implement a tool like Google Translate on a website, and from there, seeing what we can do to help the immigrant community be welcomed and folded into the community that they belong in.
And same question. KT Jacobs.
I think it's important. My family have been, they're immigrants to the United States. I'm third generation. And it, I think the way we overcome the obstacles on a personal level is to just jump in. We need to extend that welcoming hand. We need to make them a part of our neighborhood. And the diversity is, that's a word I struggle with, because I think that you need to, we need to quit labeling everything. I think it's important to just, you want to overcome diversity, welcome them, be a part of it, and educate yourself about the differences. Thank you.
And next is Nick Nowinski. Same question.
Yep. Pretty much the same as the last question. Welcome everybody the same, respect everybody the same. I have been to iftar meals. I have been to the Tibetan New Year. I've been to Ecuadorian parades. Everybody gets along. Everybody's having a good time. And if you just focus on that, instead of saying, well, I'm going to this because I'm going to it because it's a diverse event. I think that's kind of counterproductive. A lot of people I talk to, they don't want to go to it because of that. Just if we can just all get along and not focus on that, I think our community does a really good job at that.
Okay. And our next question, KT Jacobs will be the first to answer, and it relates to neighborhoods. And as you know, city council is the level of government closest to the people dealing with neighborhood issues. So this one specifically is about nuisance properties. How will you help the city deal with nuisance properties? First up, KT Jacobs.
I think we need to look at our ordinance compliance. I've had a lot of conversation with the community prior to my making the decision to run for council, and even more so after I've made the decision to run. And if the ordinances are not working, we need to look at getting rid of that ordinance or changing it. The compliance needs to be consistent across the city, and we need to take a hard look at changing ordinances that state that the responsibility of reporting is on the resident. That divides the community. Nobody wants to be the neighbor that's the crummy neighbor that ratted on somebody because they're parking on their grass, or whatever the infraction may be. The city's got it wrong. It's not our responsibility as residents to regulate and monitor that, and the city to help us. It's the city's responsibility to monitor and regulate that, and we as residents should be assisting the city. Thank you.
Same question. Nick Nowinski.
The first thing that I would do is recommend a staff department that does the property inspections better, which is our fire department. They, as a fire department, do way too many inspections with what they have. They need more people. We are, as a city, looking at the way property inspections are done, and which department it is in. A lot of the ordinances are fine, I believe. It's the enforcement and the time to enforce it with, within the department that's scheduled with the task.
And same question. Nell Bing.
So in regards to nuisance properties, we have our city code, and specifically, our city code, Chapter Eight, lays out exactly how we address our nuisance properties. If the police or fire department are called to a property three or more times a year, they get assessed a fee. And if that fee isn't paid within 30 days, it's rendered delinquent with a 10% late penalty. But it doesn't say what the fee is. Is it $20? Does, is it willing, is a neighbor willing to be a nuisance property and pay $20 just to do that? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that. So what I would say is that it needs to be a heavier, a heavier fine, because if you have the police and fire resources being tied up going out to nuisance properties three or more times a year, that's not adequate use of our resources. They need to have some sort of consequences. Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to the next question here, and Nick Nowinski will be the first to answer. It's kind of a multiple-choice answer, and I think it's a typical scenario for a city council member. You always have to deal with making cuts, finding new money, doing something in between. This one relates to the fire department. Our fire department is being stretched to its limits because of increases in both medical calls and rental inspections. There are several options. Leave-as-is, cut services, increase staff, or create a separate department for inspections. So what would you choose and how would you pay for it? First up, Nick Nowinski.
I would increase the staff with the fire department, and to help pay for it, I would increase the rental inspection fee and the other fees that are associated with that. If they're a little bit higher a fee per year per property, it'll help pay for it. And I just know that the fire department that's tasked with it is understaffed for it. So I would be happy however we had to fund it to make that better for them and add a couple of people.
And same question. Nell Bing.
I want to pick two answers. I would vote to increase staff. I recently attended a city council work session where I learned that our fire department has been sitting at about eight fully-staffed firefighters for the last 10-plus years. So first of all, I would like to increase the fire department's staff so that that weight is distributed. And then I don't see any harm with deciding to create some sort of separate inspection group, because why is, why are our firefighters, who have the training to deal with very serious issues, going out to check grass inspections? I think that we could maybe have a lead firefighter that heads the smaller department of inspections, and then a subgroup of that that would follow that management. Thank you.
And same question. KT Jacobs.
Fire department is, it holds a very, very dear spot in my heart. My father was a career fireman at Fort Sheridan when the Fifth Army was there, so it's a special place for me. There definitely need to have additional staffing. I would not be against considering a separate department. One of the things that I would like to suggest and would definitely put some effort into trying to make that happen, we do have, the fire department does have some, a summer program where they hire some young people to do a lot of the cutting grass type of issues and to log those. But I would suggest maybe, and some type of an intern program where we utilize the high school students, junior high students, and that would give them an opportunity to see what it's, what civics inaction is all about and be involved in their community. Something that would be great for them to put on their resumes as they look forward to college. Thank you.
Okay. And our final question from the audience before closing remarks, we'll start with Nell Bing, and that question is, what do you see as Columbia Heights' greatest strength, and how will you build on that?
So I think Columbia Heights' greatest strength is the fact that it is three and a half square miles. It feels like a small town, but it also has all the benefits that I can get just across the river. And I think building on that means community building. We need to increase the opportunities for residents to come together face-to-face, so that when I walk into Miller's Bar and I see somebody, I can say, KT, how are you doing? Like, we know each other, because that's what Columbia Heights is like. You go somewhere, you see somebody you know. It's not something you find in Minneapolis. But on the other side of that, we also need to keep it so that Columbia Heights remains a destination. Columbia Heights has opportunities and things to do. Good local restaurants, and bookstores, and music stores, and a community center. I'd like to just continue to build on the community that Columbia Heights already has. Thank you. Could you ask a question again?
Sure. What do you see as Columbia Heights' greatest strength, and how will you build on that? To KT Jacobs.
Clearly, the greatest strength for Columbia Heights is all of you people sitting here. It's the residents of the community. It's the people that live next door to you, that live across the street from you, that live across town from you, that compose the backbone of what we are. We've got a lot to offer. We have a wonderful small-town image that is a bit more cosmopolitan than other areas. And I think that the way we build on that is to come together. My hope is that we can fill, see this kind of numbers for a council meeting, instead of three or four people filling those chairs. Bringing the community together, making sure that they understand and feel that they are truly being heard and that their voice matters.
And next is Nick Nowinski.
Yep. I agree with both of them. The people of this community are the greatest asset that we have, and the passion that each and every resident has for whatever their project or idea is, is something that we have to try to network everybody together through different volunteering, different meetings, different ways of getting people out. And once we get to know our neighbors and know what everybody in this city can do, and if we can get everybody passionately on the same page, we will do great things.
Okay. That completes the audience questions. Final round here is with the closing remarks, and we'll start out with KT Jacobs.
Again, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting our evening, and for all of you people for coming out and giving us the opportunity to share our thoughts with you and what we would like to bring to Columbia Heights for you. There's been some very thought-provoking questions this evening. It's been my privilege to sit here before you. I've promised to be fiscally responsible with your money. I've promised to listen to what you say about your city, and I've promised to be accountable to you. I'm committed to bringing the voice of the residents back to council chambers. When you elect me as your council member, I promise to consider all, but to act on behalf of the majority and not special interests. Together, we can make a difference. KT Jacobs is the choice for your voice to be heard. Please vote on November 6th, most importantly, and then vote for KT Jacobs for city council. Thank you for your time, and thank you for listening.
And next is, wait, did I miss one here? Nell Bing. No? Sorry. Nick Nowinski.
Thank you. If elected, I will continue to serve with the passion that I have already for the last couple of years. I do want to be elected. I know last time that I did miss it by 127 votes, so please reach out if you have questions. I know a lot of the answers that we've been able to give in the minute that it was allotted. If there's questions, reach out to us, get to know, and just get out and vote. Do the civic participation, and if elected, I will continue to serve the way I have been, getting out to meet residents and putting them first over any big agendas.
Thank you. Nell Bing.
Again, thank you to the League of Women Voters for having us. Thank you dearly to my husband for all the support that he gives me on a daily basis. I didn't know that I was going to be running for city council when I moved to Columbia Heights, but it literally clicked with me one day after we had finally settled into our home. We're sitting out in our front yard, and my then-one-year-old is running in the grass, and I realized, this is the place that Juliet is going to call her hometown. This is a place that, when she's 18, 20, 30, she's going to look back and say, that's where I was raised. And I knew right then and there that I had a responsibility to be very intimately involved in our local political process. This home is where we've laid our stakes, and I am excited to bring a new, fresh, new and fresh ideas into the council chambers. I am so excited to even have this opportunity to be here in front of you tonight, and I would be honored to earn your vote on November 6th. Thank you. My name is Nell Bing.
And before we close up this section, just a few final comments here. Thanks to the League of Women Voters, and a big thank you to the North Metro TV for taping this program, and of course, to the audience for listening and coming up with really wonderful questions this evening. Please remember to visit the League of Women Voters' website, or also through the Secretary of State's office at mnvotes.org for election information related to early voting. Remember to vote for sure by November 6th on that date. And so with that, let's thank our candidates and their willingness to run for office.